Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for being with us today. Today is Tuesday, August the 11th, and this is a regular voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. That's it. Any introductions, Jim or Chris? Okay. I'm told that Father Jeffrey was not able to make it today, so let's move right ahead to the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilman Lamerson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Kirkendall.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kuknio.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
And Councilwoman Wilcox is absent excused.
Okay. And you have an announcement.
I do.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to announce that the ballots for the upcoming City of Prescott primary election have been mailed to all registered voters in the City of Prescott. And if you are a registered voter and have not received your ballot, you should contact the Yavapai County Recorder's Office, and that phone number is 771-3248. And also, as a reminder, all ballots must be received by 7:00 PM on Election Day, August 25th, in order for it to be counted. The ballots can be returned by mail, or can be dropped off either at the Yavapai County Elections Center at 1015 Fair Street, or here at City Hall, 201 South Cortez.
Okay, thank you. We have one proclamation. The Prescott Child Support Awareness Month. Do we have somebody here that'll be receiving that? Great, thanks for coming down. Come on down.
I took this morning. I voted her. And I voted her to encourage everyone.
Very good.
This month is Child Support Awareness Month, August 2015. Whereas children need parental support and stability from both parents for their financial, emotional, and physical growth, and whereas establishing strong partnerships between community and parents is necessary when it comes to identifying valuable resources for parents and caretakers, and whereas community partnerships serve children and family through a variety of programs and targeted resources, which helps support Arizonans by promoting awareness of needs and assistance to meet those needs, while encouraging individual responsibility and working towards a greater self-sufficiency. And whereas children need to feel safe and secure in order to believe in themselves and know what their future is, and whereas strengthening individuals and the family with an emphasis on fiscal accountability promotes the safety and well-being of children, provides stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunity for families to be able to enhance their children's future. And whereas an informed parent can help make a child support system work, and with the state and local and tribal support programs, legislators and courts relying to improve collaborative efforts for families. And whereas with the focus on a change in culture, the Arizona Department of Economic Security Division of Child Support Services is committed to engaging with parents and families through improved accessibility, providing personal development and employment opportunities to assist Arizonans to reach their full potential, humbly serving Arizonans with excellence, respect, integrity, and kindness, and being a champion of economic growth and opportunity. Therefore, Mayor of the City of Prescott, of Arizona, do hereby proclaim August 15th as Child Support Awareness Month.
I always want to say something when given the opportunity to say something. It is a delight that Prescott is making the commitment to making sure that we are a community in which children and families can thrive. And we have dozens of organizations, if not perhaps hundreds, here in the Prescott and surrounding area that are working to make this happen. Things like First Things for State Agency for Early Childhood, Head Start, Arizona's Children's Association, and Prevent Child Abuse Arizona, which I represent, are all working towards this vision. So we are thrilled that the mayor is officially proclaiming this month as Child Support Awareness Month. Thank you.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda. Item A: Approval of Minutes for the City Council meetings held on June 2nd, 2015, June 9th, and June 23rd, 2015. Item B: Approval of a professional service agreement with Western Technology Incorporated for on-call health and safety consulting services in an amount not to exceed $25,000, City Contract Number 2016-012. Item C: Approval of payment to Application Data Service Systems Incorporated for fiscal year 2016 Police Department Public Safety Software Annual Support and Maintenance Services in the amount of $17,629, City Contract Number 2016-031. Item D: Approval of ACCR Trust Board Grants for Fiscal Year 2016. Item E: Ratification of payment for emergency purchase of one each hydraulic water pump from Arizona Wastewater Industries in the amount of $19,991.51 wastewater fund. Item F: Approval of final amount of $12,729.35 for custodial services provided by DustBusters in fiscal year 2015. Item G: Adoption of Ordinance Number 4949-1487, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the granting of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company, an Arizona corporation, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said easement. And Item H: Approval of one adjustment of the fiscal year 2015 expenditure limit for Contract Number 2015-223 with Waxy Sanitary Supply to $54,510, and two Amendment Number One to City Contract Number 2015-223A1 with Waxy Sanitary Supply to increase the annual not-to-exceed amount for fiscal year 2016, and for additional fiscal year extensions there to $60,000, various funds.
Any questions or comments from the council on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 1A through 1H.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Vote, please. Now, let's move to the Liquor License Consent Agenda.
Item Two: Liquor License Consent Agenda. On today's Liquor License Consent Agenda, there are four applications for a Series 15 Special Event liquor license. Item A is St. Luke's Episcopal Church. Item B, Sister City Association of Prescott. Item C, Prescott Animal Park Association. And Item D, Yavapai County Mounted Sheriff's Posse. These applications have been reviewed and determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval. No, they can be one.
They're okay. Any questions on the liquor license consent agenda?
No. Mayor, move to forward Special Event liquor license applications 2A through 2D to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion made, and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, let's move on to the regular agenda.
Item Three A: Appointment of members to City Boards, Commissions, and Committees to fill vacancies on the Art and Public Places Committee, Advisory and Appeals Board, and to appoint a Chair and Vice Chair of the Prescott Preservation Commission. Mayor and Council, this item is presented for your consideration and approval of the Council Appointment Committee's recommendations for the following appointments. For the Advisory and Appeals Board, currently, the Advisory and Appeals Board has three vacancies, one for the electrical position, the mechanical position, and the plumbing position. The Council Appointment Committee is recommending that Larry Meads be appointed to fill the vacant electrical position on the board. For the Prescott Preservation Commission, recently, Michael Todd resigned his appointment to the commission, and Mr. Todd was the Chair of the commission. A recruitment is underway to fill the vacated position, however, the commission now requires an existing member be appointed as Chair. So the Council Appointment Committee is recommending Trinity Shelton be appointed as Chair, and Ms. Shelton is currently the Vice Chair. So the Council Appointment Committee is also recommending that DJ Buckey be appointed as Vice Chair. And then for the Arts and Public Places Committee, there were nine applications that were submitted to fill the membership of this committee. The Council Appointment Committee meant to review the applications, to review and discuss the applications. After consideration of all the applications, the Council Appointment Committee is recommending Jim Antonius, Ron Miller, Thomas Restivo, Alexander Rudolph be appointed to the Art and Public Places Committee. So should the council decide to appoint these applicants, there still is the one vacancy. After the council appointment had met, the committee had met, another application was received from Cindy Gresser, but it was not submitted with the applications that were reviewed by the Council Appointment Committee. So after informing the Council Appointment Committee that an additional application had been received, they requested the application be submitted to the council for consideration along with the other applications. If the council wishes to include Ms. Gresser in the appointments to the Art and Public Places Committee, her name can be added to the motion. And so with that, I can answer any questions.
Comments from the council, questions?
Mayor, this is a long time coming, and I think it's a great move forward to getting a handle on art and public places, and I'd be happy to make a motion if anybody else wants.
Okay, if there's no other comments, any public comments?
I agree with the addition to Ms. Gresser, too.
Okay, why don't you go ahead? We've got two different motions.
Move to appoint Jim Antonius, Ron Miller, Thomas Restivo, and Alexander Rudolph, and Cindy Gresser to the Arts and Public Places Committee.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Now, you want to continue with the appeals?
Certainly. Move to appoint Larry Meads to the Advisory and Appeals Board.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
And move to appoint Trinity Shelton as Chair and DJ Buckey as Vice Chair of the Prescott Preservation Committee.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Mayor, I'd like to add to that, just I'd like to thank all of those folks that step up and volunteer for these committees, and all of our committees. Without their help, things would move much slower in our community, so thank you.
I'd second that. Thank you.
I think that is reflect all of our comments. Jim, you had something?
Well, no, I just agree with what Chris, and Greg, and you, and everybody else. You know, without the volunteers, the community wouldn't be as smooth as it is now.
To all of you, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, let's move on to Item B.
Item Three B: Approval to purchase fire department personnel protective equipment turnouts from L.N. Curtis &amp; Sons using state contract number DC110009-5 pricing in the amount of $65,250, City Contract Number 2016-004, General Fund.
Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm before you this afternoon to seek your approval to pursue our annual purchasing needs in regards to firefighter turnouts. As you'll recall from last year, one turnout set has been issued to each of our members. In addition, we have to purchase new turnouts for new employees as they're required as well. This particular purchase will also come to a close, basically, of getting all our firefighters the proper personal protective equipment to allow them to have two sets immediately available to them, therefore allowing them to take one set out of service, get them clean, get them repaired, and those effects, without affecting their ability to respond. The purchase price is through the state contract, and as we look forward, and I kind of look, price this out in the out-years, we should have a reduction in next year's budget back to what we feel is probably a static cost of around $46,000 on this line item from next year and beyond. So with that, I'd entertain any questions. The one thing I will point out, I think Councilman Arnold asked me last year, as far as the storage of the turnouts, we've resolved that situation in four of our five locations. We're still working through some issues at 74, primarily because of space. We're kind of looking at something that doesn't become an eyesore in the form of something other than a Connex box sitting on a property that's a fairly well-traveled road, but we want to also make sure that we do secure those away from secondary exposures to our firefighters by not sawing them necessarily in the high base, so we'll continue to pursue that issue. With that, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Questions, Council? Go ahead.
I'm second. I don't know if there was a first.
Question. How long do these turnouts last, and once they reach that determination of time to give them up, do we give them to other fire departments? What do you do with them?
Well, I can't talk necessarily to past practice. Normally, they have a service life of anywhere from four to seven years, at which time either the NFPA code that applies to turnouts mandates their recycling and taking out of service, or that they become, much like our self-contained breathing apparatus, noncompliant, at which time we move. But it is a continuous rolling cycle, anywhere from four to seven years. Naturally, those folks that wear them and use them a lot more often in some of our busier engine companies may wear them down quicker than perhaps some in the less busy engine companies might, plus it deals with the training as well. The second part of your question, as far as the ability to cycle these out and where they go to, normally, once we have equipment, we have a surplus of that equipment. They're no longer used for us. If they're no longer viable for us, it's very rare that we would want to share those with other departments. If they're noncompliant for us, we're just passing somebody else our problem. So in most cases, I can speak from what's been done with some of our surplus equipment, and they're kind of turned over to organizations perhaps south of the border that might be able to benefit from stuff that's noncompliant to U.S. standards.
Chief, I'm not too hip on my fire science terminology. Turnouts are basically everything, you know, the heavy stuff, the pants and the boots and the...
Right. It's the firefighter ensemble. The pants, primarily, they have a liner with a barrier inside built in, the coat, reinforced sleeves, elbows, knees, and at the stress points of the crotch as well, and that way they provide a barrier protection. They also provide insulation from exposure to fire and flames.
So you just couldn't use a one-piece Carhartt or something like that?
Probably not, no.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of personal protective equipment turnouts from L.N. Curtis &amp; Sons using state contract number DC110009-5 pricing in the amount of $250,000, I'm sorry, $65,250, City Contract Number 2016-004.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Chief. Item C?
Item C: Approval Amendment Number Two to City Contract Number 2015-169A2 with Copper Sun Construction LLC, providing for additional work at the Prescott Area Shelter Services Phase Two Family Shelter Renovation Project at 337 North Crest Street in the amount of $18,357, $357.50, CDBG funding.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As you know, the council awarded the contract to Copper Sun Construction end of April of this year in the amount of $56,830. And the scope of work included remodeling and installation of fire sprinkler system through the three-story structure. And this contract amendment is to do additional work with respect to the installation of the fire suppression system, including softening of the exposed pipes. It's been determined through the construction process that the exposed pipes are low, and they could be inadvertently damaged by the residents. In addition, it's necessary to upsize one of the water lines associated with the suppression system. And finally, there are going to be two additional walls added in one of the main bedrooms on the main floor, which potentially increases the occupancy of the facility up to 20 to 22 persons. And as you know, this money is CDBG money. It's 100% funded, CDBG funds. There's no impact to the general fund. And did want to make you aware that the financial information in the staff report is correct with respect to Phase Two only. There's an additional $21,987 that was spent as part of Phase One. So the total expenditures to date, with this approval of this contract amendment, is a little over. It's $100,975. We've talked with the contractor, and they're anticipating that the work will be completed by the end of this month, with the issuance, be able to issue the CVO, and they'll be able to occupy the facility again. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
You had the money.
Yes.
Okay. Council, question? Okay. Any comments from the public? Good afternoon, Dan.
Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Mattson. I'm a homeless advocate. We've had a great need for this. I know of a family with a single father that could really use housing, three kids and a single father. We have no place else for them. The sooner we can get this up and running, the better. We have no problem having people who need this, and this is basically a transitional shelter. So this is a place where people can get things together and take care of the, all the things they need to do in order to become self-sufficient. It's going to more than pay for itself in the making of productive families, so I strongly recommend that it be approved.
Good. Thank you, Dan. Have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve Amendment Number Two to the City Contract Number 2015-169A2 with Copper Sun Construction LLC in the amount of $18,357.50.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay. Item D, when you're ready.
Item D: Award of City Contract Number 2016-022 for the fiscal year 2016 Sidewalks Repair Project to Coeck General Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $179,870.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, the item before you today is a contract to repair and replace deteriorated sidewalks in the downtown area. This is part of our sidewalk improvement program for this fiscal year. It's the downtown area bounded by Sheldon, McCormick, Mount Vernon, and LaRue. This is the third part of this program that's been very successful, and we're looking to continue the program based on additional funding in future years. This project has about 16,300 square feet of sidewalk that'll be upgraded, and 12 handicap ramps in that same area. The project was publicly bid over two consecutive weeks. Two bids were received on July 23rd, with Coeck General Contractors being the low bid, which was below the engineer's estimate. The bid's been reviewed, the contractor's licensing, references, past performance has been completed, and the bid was deemed responsive and balanced. We're looking to award the contract hopefully today, with a pre-construction meeting beginning next week, and completion of the project in late October. This project is funded by the Streets and Open Space Fund, and if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Chris?
Mayor, I just wanted to say, you know, we are going on year three of this, and you can really start seeing a difference downtown. I mean, when you go around on these streets, and I'm guessing you'd be our mobility expert, but I imagine this kind of project is really helping us get people with disabilities around downtown, too. So I'm fully supportive of this project, and I'd like to see it keep going for a long time, and maybe we'll fix the deteriorating shape of the sidewalks. Thank you for what you guys are doing.
Steve?
Quick question. Knowing and being part of the construction world, have we given any thought whatsoever of using pavers opposed to concrete, knowing that the cost of pavers is somewhat cheaper than concrete in certain areas?
Well, we have not looked at that specifically, because in the areas that we've been working, it's been mostly replacing existing sidewalk that has deteriorated. We would be open to looking at considering pavers in certain areas, but that gets into a much bigger conversation of which pavers, which areas do we want to do a similar paver throughout the whole downtown area, and there's a larger conversation that we should have, and we can look into that, definitely.
And the only reason why I bring that up is there's places out there that have roots and such underneath the sidewalks. It seems it would be easier to be able to raise a sidewalk and make them ADA as wall by putting them over top rather than pouring concrete and just having them bust up again. To be able to replace them might be simpler, so just a thought.
Mm-hmm. We'll definitely explore that.
Anyone else? Comments from the public? We budgeted $200,000 total.
I thought it was $225,000.
I thought it was $250,000. Do I hear $275,000?
But you've still got a little money.
$300,000.
If we need to do some additional or some emergency, okay.
Definitely. Yeah, it was $225,000. And I think it was in future years, we're looking to increase it, to do even more sidewalk improvements.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. Move to award City Contract Number 2016-022 to Coeck General Contractors in the amount of $179,870.00.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Let's go to Item E.
Item E: Award of City Contract Number 2016-024 for the annual utility locating and potholing project to Earth Resources Corporation in amount not to exceed $75,000.
Thank you. This contract is a little different one for us. This is for utility locating and potholing, which is basically a non-destructive way of finding utilities, their exact location. We do have an ASBIL program, but invariably, some utilities get adjusted in the field during construction, and we need to verify where these utilities are buried, both horizontally and vertically in the roadway. This contract is to assist the CIP program in their project designs. Also, our street maintenance staff will also be utilizing these pothole activities to locate water, sewer, and other utility lines as needed to facilitate our work. It's really a vital part of our project when we can pre-plan and determine any potential conflicts early, make adjustments versus doing it in the field when there's a contractor on the ground trying to do some work. So this is really a vital element. This is an as-needed. This is a one-year contract that we have set up to be able to be extended by two one-year periods at the same $75,000 a year. So we're trying to keep up and use what we need when we need it.
Question?
You know, Mayor, my only comment was, when I was looking at the bidders, we have one local bidder, and he's half what the next one up is. Is that just reflecting mobilization that they'd have to have, cost, and coming to town is why that bid's high? And is it strange that we only had one local bidder on a project of this type?
Yeah, and historically, we've had two or three. In some years in past, we've had a, the low bid has been from the valley. And in some cases, the unit costs for some of the potholes were very similar, and other ones were higher, and we do believe that it was the mobilization of, if you have to do one pothole and you have to bring a rig from the valley up to here, it's a pretty large expense.
And nobody else local jumped in on this one?
Not this time.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway.
Chris, I had the same question. I was surprised to see only one local when most of the contracts show us that there's three or four locals that do potholing.
Yeah. The other two that have bid in years past didn't bid this time for some reason.
Comments from the public? Katie, we have a motion?
Move to award City Contract 2016-024 for the annual utility locating and potholing project to Earth Resources Corporation in amount not to exceed $75,000.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay. Item F, when you're ready.
Item F: Approval of Amendment Number Three for City Contract Number 2013-029A3 Zone 27 Reservoir and Piping Project with CLM Earth Movers LLC in the amount of $120,017.78.
Good afternoon again. This is an item to amend city contract for the construction of the Zone 27 project. The project has been completed, and in the final reconciliation, some line items go over the original estimate, some go under, and the net difference was this $120,017.78. This is the final reconciliation of the contract. And usually, these items don't necessarily come before council, because our contract allowance is set at a reasonable amount to cover this sort of item, but for some reason, this project had a lower contract allowance set, and we've had some issues with that. We've made it a policy now to have a minimum of a 10% contract allowance on all projects to cover things like this. So if there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
I just want to commend CLM Earth Movers and the project up there. I've been up there several times, and, you know, you never could imagine a water tank could look so beautiful. And I'm quite sure the neighborhood has to be pleased with the final project and the final outcome. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and the landscaping will be even better in a couple of years when it matures even more. even more.
Any other comments, Council? I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
The old tank gone?
Yes, the old tank is gone.
So that's all history.
Yeah, the little tank at the corner, little tank. The smaller tank at the corner has been removed and re-landscaped.
Okay, there'd been an inquiry at one time from, maybe it's HOI, somebody, that there was some excess land that we might have ended up with on this project, that the neighborhood was interested in what's going to happen to it, or was it another project?
There is a small remainder parcel that's part of the project right now. The final disposition hasn't been resolved, but we can evaluate some option at some point in the future.
I don't think it's a big thing, but, okay. Do you have a motion? Comments from the public? Okay.
Mayor?
Go.
Move to approve Amendment #3 to City Contract #2013-029A3 with CLM Earth Movers LLC in the Amount of $120,010.78.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, vote please.
Passes six to zero.
Moody, thank you.
Thank you.
Item G.
Mr. Mayor, Item 3G, staff has requested this item be pulled and considered at a later time. They're requesting time to reevaluate the project's scope of work, so.
Okay, so that wraps up today.
We don't have to motion to pull it, do we?
Anything further? Thanks for being here, we are adjourned.